allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please.
I need that from my heart.
May be seated. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda relates to citizen concerns.
And these are related to any concerns that do not appear on the agenda. So if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and any concerns that you may have. Hearing none, we'll move to item number four, which is approval of the agenda dated May 17, 2016. And I would move it with two changes. One, I would ask that item 18F, the law enforcement center expansion update, be moved to after item number 13, as the individuals there have about a six-hour trip. And also to strike item 18B, as there's some contractual and legal counsel that we are receiving, for which that item is not ready. So with that, I would move the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. The agenda is approved. Item five is approval of the minutes of the May 10, 2016, meeting.
Move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second as their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. I'll abstain. And the motion carries four to zero. A reason for the abstention is I was not present. Item number six is discussion on approval of the claims.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second as their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the claims are approved, five to zero. Item seven is Board of Supervisors Good News Report. And we wanted to, or I wanted to make known something that I found from 2005. I was just on a couple of weeks of active-duty training and found this, that your board had supported in the past, and I believe supports today. It's a statement of support for the Guard and Reserve. As you know, we have about 9,100 Guard members. And over the last 15 years, there's been 18,000 deployments since September 11, 2001. And we just saw a reserve unit that also is deploying from the Sioux City area. And so the commitment back in 2005 that then Chairman George Boykin signed on behalf of the board stipulates some things that we, as a county, I believe, continue to uphold. And that's that employment won't be denied for anyone in service in the Guard or Reserve. Job and career opportunities will remain the same. Employees will be granted leaves of absence for military service without sacrifice of vacation. And that policy will be made known throughout the organization. And I just wanted to thank fellow supervisors for allowing my attendance there, and Supervisor Monson for taking over the chairmanship for those couple of weeks. And just wanted to share very briefly, I worked in the Brooke Army Medical Center, in the trauma ward, and saw some amazing things down at Fort Sam Houston. And just very briefly, wanted to show a two-minute clip of some of these wounded warriors, and what they are doing, these men and women who have sacrificed a lot. And this is the Center for the Intrepid, where wounded warriors come back from amputee surgeries, and they get their lives back together, either to return to civilian life in their families, or to actually return to active duty, in some cases. So if we can try to roll this video, it'll take two minutes, and share a little bit of what we saw.
Welcome to the State of the World Rehabilitation Center, the Center for the Intrepid, located in San Antonio, Texas, on Joint Base San Antonio, Fort Sam Houston. The CFI falls within Department of Pediatrics and Rehabilitation, and its leadership are Brooke Army Medical Center. The Center for the Intrepid represents the ultimate representation of the American people and the United States Army. In 2005, Mr. Arnold Fisher of the Intrepid Fallen Heroes Fund proffered outpatient rehabilitation center to the Secretary of the Army that lent therapy, stimulation, and extreme sports for its patients. Through the generosity of over 600,000 Americans who donated to this worthy cause, the CFI became a reality a short 16 months later. The CFI building has an unusual elliptical shape that encompasses four floors. Visitors to the facility are often taken by the sheer beauty of the structure and the wow factor of some of the equipment. But don't let the wow factor mislead you to thinking that high-tech equipment does the work for the patients. This facility creates an environment where the patients work hard in all aspects of the rehabilitation, and it's the direct result of their efforts. The objective of the care provided in the CFI is to maximize each patient's potential and prepare them to return to active duty or civilian life. Patient care services at the CFI are truly interdisciplinary. A patient's team may consist of several specialties within the CFI, including physical medicine and rehabilitation, case management, behavioral medicine, occupational therapy, physical therapy, prosthetic fitting and rehabilitation, and recreational therapy. The CFI offers the full spectrum of advanced outpatient rehabilitation for patients with limb loss, burn patients, limb salvage patients, and others with sustained severe injuries who are on the limb.
That was a center that we were helped supporting while I was there. And thank you all for your help in being able to be there to support it. So with that, we have some more good news that I understand Supervisor Monson will be on for next week?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, with that, we will move to item number eight, planning and zoning, with John Pellelo. This is to receive a rezoning petition with referral to zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation regarding Affordable Self-Storage LLC.
John Pellelo, planning and zoning. This is a rezoning petition we received from Mr. Kelly Prye related to a three-acre parcel on 210th Street. He's made the application because his son wants to construct a house, and we're at the maximum residential density in the area. So it requires a rezone from ag preservation to ag estates. I'm requesting you receive the petition and forward to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation.
Move it. Second.
With a motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion to receive carries five to zero. Item B is to receive the zoning commission recommendation for Iowa Code Section 403.5 regarding the 2016 amendment to the Liberty Park urban renewal area.
Iowa Code requires a local zoning commission to review any amendments to an urban renewal plan, and that includes any change in the mapping. Mr. Butler will be up shortly to discuss with you geographic change in the area to be included. On April 25, the zoning commission reviewed and has found that the plan meets the terms and conditions of our general development plan. I've got a letter here from the chairman of the zoning commission, which I'll provide the auditor for the record. Staff would also recommend that the terms and conditions of our general development plan are met. I'm asking you accept, make a motion to accept the zoning commission's official recommendation.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. We have two set times at 4:45, so we will move up until then to item number 11, which is Human Resources. And Ed Gilliland. The first item is item A, which is to approve the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Move it.
A motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 11B is the approval of the request to deauthorize positions.
Move it.
A motion is there, second? I will second it. Is there a discussion on these deauthorizations? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 11C is to authorize the chairman to sign authorization to initiate the hiring process.
These are all filling positions that are vacant?
That's correct.
Move it.
Either that, or they were, sorry, replaced the ones that we just deauthorized.
A motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 11D is the reclassification of the Sheriff Department Clerk's Discussion in Action. Ed, you want to give us a little bit of an overview on this item?
Yeah, the basic overview of this is that we have three people in the Sheriff's Department, one of which is classified as what we would call a grade three on the ASME pay scale. The other two are what they call grade two. I believe that would be a clerk two for the higher one, and civilian clerk for the grade two. When we did, in conjunction with the folks from ASME, ASME did most of the work, pretty much all of the work, they did a great deal of work on it. They reviewed, and what we did is we compared the duties of the people in a similar, a similar type of position with other sheriff departments and our comparables. When we looked at those, what we found is that, and I'll talk about the clerk, the clerk two, which is a pay grade three, to start with, the higher-paid one of the three ladies, she did things that nobody else in the state does. She did things that in other departments were strictly done by sworn officers. So you're talking about $27 an hour versus the rate that this young lady receives. And when you compared all of the duties across the board, it was clear that she was classified too low. It's, I think it's only appropriate that we would move her to a, to a grade five. But still, again, the duties that she's doing aren't duties that someone else in a comparable position is doing in the state. But they all, she's also well below, even with that move, she'll still be right in the middle, right in the mix with the other ladies, even though she's doing more, or the other people in that position across the state, even though she's doing some duties that they aren't.
Is this ASME?
Yes, this is ASME.
You happy with this?
With the grade five, yes.
And now, as far as the other two, we, they're in grade two currently. The proposal's to move them to either grade three or grade four. And I've left that as a, as a board decision. I believe the Sheriff's recommendation and ASME's recommendation is that we would move them to grade four. I'm comfortable with grade three or grade four. Again, it's a very similar kind of situation where, given the, how duties have revamped over the years, the volume of duties and things like that, they are doing things that weren't done previously. And compared to the people that, compared to the people that are doing the same thing they are in our comparables, they would be at a grade three or grade four level.
So the 13,000 would have them at what?
The 13,000 difference would have them at grade three, and the other lady that we'd spoken of at grade five. If we move them to grade four, so it'd be two people grade, to grade four, and one to grade five, that would be approximately $19,000 a year difference.
Who initiated the review of the positions? Was that out of your office?
The review, well, yes, it's kind of a long, long story, yes.
Before we get into that long story, my anticipation is that that long story might be cut off.
Into your time. Essentially, what it was brought to.
And so with that, sorry.
No, you're right.
What I'm suggesting is maybe that we table this until after the set times, and that way, we don't cut anyone off mid-sentence. Does that sound fair? So according to my computer clock, we are now at a set time. And we are now in a public hearing under item 9A, on a proposed urban renewal plan amendment. So Dennis, do you want to give an introduction, then anyone can come and speak either for or against the proposed urban renewal plan amendment?
Okay, what we're doing here is we're amending our, the amendment number two on our urban renewal called Liberty Park. During this process, we're going to change the name of Liberty Park to Grow Woodbury County. So it covers basically the whole county instead of just one area. Also, we're putting in the district, amending will be the property down Dogwood Trail, Sergeant Bluff. Also, three parcels down there by AGP. Be AGP and the two parcels north of that, there are industrial parcels. The reason we want to do this is because we kind of made a development agreement with Sergeant Bluff to do a loan, which they will be paying back on a percentage basis. Also, down in the AGP area where they do have a seven-year tax exemption, total tax exemption for seven years. But the reason why I want to get them in there now is to keep the base low. Then after seven years, we'll have an increment value there. We may or may not use it, because it'll be tied in with CF Industries, where it's going to generate a tremendous amount of value down the road. In seven years, there'll be a tremendous value. So we may not use it, but it gives AGP, Nutrex, and Anderson Brothers, north of that, ability to expand with potential help from Woodbury County for an expansion. We may or may not use it. We did have our consultation hearings. We sent out notices to two school districts. One did attend. The other is here tonight. I did call.
I believe both are here tonight.
Yes. I called their business agent for, I, jail sponder, and talked to her about it, and she conferred with a superintendent. We had our notices published, so everything's, all of our ducks are in line to go ahead and pass this.
Thank you very much for that introduction. We are in a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak for or against the proposed urban renewal plan amendment. Would anybody like to address the board? Thank you very much, sir. Even though we know it, would you state your name and?
Yes, Rod Elwin, Superintendent Sergeant Bluff Luton. I'm not against the proposals at all. Just a couple of questions. First of all, is there, will there be a sunset on the TIF in the Sergeant Bluff School District on, on Dogwood Trail?
Our, our, ten on Dogwood Trail is 10 years. That's the loan we're going to take. A five-year loan, but it just depends how fast growth happens down there. As soon as it's paid off, we release it and we walk away from it to Sergeant Bluff's.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you. And again, the reason I ask these questions is, TIF has, you know, we deal with Sioux City as well. Our school district runs up into the city of Sioux City, and much of the development is happening in, in Sergeant Bluff Community School District. So I'm just a little skeptical when I hear TIF. And I apologize for that, but we have a history, and I just get a little nervous when we start tiffing lots of, lots of things. The other, the other question I have, I guess, is, is, and I don't know if this is a valid question or not, but I'm going to ask it. Is this what they consider spot tiffing? And picking spots rather than being contiguous to other areas that are already tiffed?
Go ahead.
Okay, we've, we've consulted with our attorney down Des Moines. He has consulted with other, attorney from the other law firm. They agree that we can do this, and we don't want to call it spot, we want to call it expanded TIF. It is not continuous. But they have Supreme Court ruling, court cases, and there's 24 other counties doing the same thing. But this is something you want to progress with, and it's the benefit of everybody.
So, yeah, the bottom line is not contiguous to the original Liberty.
What did you refer to that as? Not spot, but what?
Expanded TIFs.
Expanded TIFs, okay. I just need to make sure I remember that. So in the future, I can reference expanded TIF rather than spot tiffing.
When this TIF was developed, we did not use the word blighted, which means it will sunset in 20 years.
Okay. Makes sense. All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there others who would like to speak for or against the proposed urban renewal plan amendment?
Hearing none. I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the public hearing is closed on a vote of five to zero. Now to the approval of the resolution of the 2016 urban renewal plan amendment for the Liberty Park urban renewal area, and changing the name of the area to Grow Woodbury County Urban Renewal Area.
Move it.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 9C is the approval of the ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the 2016 amendment to the Grow Woodbury County Urban Renewal Area.
What does that mean, Dennis?
Okay, this is a requirement you have to pass when we do this. This causes division of the tax-incentive property, or valuations taxes when it comes. And it does do that part. Also, there are actually three readings, but we do the first one, and then in the same motion, you waive the second two readings. This has been done to pass with the last amendment that we just did, for amendment number one. Basically, it's just the division of taxes, but you have to do an ordinance to do it. And it does describe the boundary lines of the TIF area. Now, when we do publish this amendment, or this ordinance, we can summarize the legal descriptions to shorten this, so it isn't lengthy, like three or four pages. We can shorten it, according to our attorney, and he can write it up for us to shorten it.
I would move it.
A motion is there, a second?
Second, but did you say we had to make another motion to waive the second and third?
In this motion, it's included right in the motion that you're waiving in the next two readings. Correct.
So my motion has the next two readings in it. I got it.
Right. The actual motion is on page nine of your workbook. It's been moved by supervisor and seconded by supervisor. That's where you vote on it, and then you suspend the next two. So the actual motion can be picked up by Pat through this here.
I, I stand to be corrected, but I think you have to have a motion on the second two.
Yeah, you have to have a second. It's just like a regular motion.
Yeah, so you pass it once, and then you pass the second, third reading on another motion.
I think that would be correct. That is correct.
Okay, so what's the motion that I just seconded?
The first reading.
First motion was the approval of the ordinance, and the second one would be to waive the second and third.
Okay.
Correct. Two different motions. Correct.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the ordinance approval is five to zero. We are to a.
Now, you, you need to have a, a second motion for two and three. I'm not making it, but that's all right.
Okay. Well, we will wait for it.
What do we need?
I moved to waive the second and third.
And I will take Supervisor Monson's second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And that motion carries five to zero. Anything else that we need to do, honorary? All right. Now we are to our other set time, just past 4:45, on item number 10, which is a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the county thereunder. Dennis, do you want to give us some introductory remarks? And then we will take any public comments.
What we're doing here, we are, when our attorney drew this up, we used Allers Law Firm for this capital loan, for our capital loans. He suggested to have a little overrun of 2 million, well, not over 2 million, to go up to a max of 2,015,000. Actually, we're going to borrow 1,892,000, because that matches our CIP program that was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Yes, there may be some projects here that are going to fall short. What I mean short is they estimated the price, say 100,000, comes up 80. The differences there, we're going to use to cover other projects. My go-over example would be the LEC steps. That's over, I think, approximately 30,000. So we'll have money to cover that. So it will balance out. Some of these projects will carry forward next year. Example, we passed voting machines for scanning voting machines. We're going to cumber that, so we can carry it over. So next year, we keep track of the ones we carry over from this fiscal year, and keep track of the ones for next year when you do the loan next year. These are low-interest loans, or 1.19%, and they're five-year loans.
Jenny, could you break down A for us?
Okay, let me get it here. Okay, A is improvements equipment, remodeling, reconstruction, law enforcement center and courthouse. It's a list of about probably 12 different items, but I can give examples here.
No, just give us a list.
Of A? You want the breakdown of A, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's courthouse duck work at WCICC. Steam traps, replace non-functioning units, outdoor perimeter lighting replacement, courthouse cooling tower, board of sewer office meeting rooms, steam trap study, courthouse HVAC upgrade, courthouse painting, courthouse roof, courthouse exterior facade windows, courthouse lobby loads, move of treasure to tax to prosper hoit, replace front steps of LEC and handrails, replacement of restroom doors and LEC, LEC expansion, that's just 25,000 for study, LEC water heater, LEC clothes washer replacement, and LEC hot and water shut-offs and plumbing tunnels. It's a variety of projects, but we lumped these together, because the other ones are big enough that they stand alone. They do not exceed 1.2 million total per projects. So A, B, C, and D do not exceed the 1.2 million, even though the total's 1.892 million.
Questions on Dennis's introduction? Thank you very much, Dennis. We are in a public hearing on the authorization of the loan agreement. Would anyone like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none. I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
A motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the public hearing is closed on a vote of five to zero. Item 10B is the approval of a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second as their discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 10C is the approval of the engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney. Dennis?
Okay, on our CIP loans, we have established a criteria. We do get a engagement letter with our Allers Law Firm. The higher the dollar amount, the higher the engagement costs go. Our last one was 5,000, which our loan was 1.3 million. We are 1.892 million, so engagement is $6,200 flat fee. They cannot exceed that unless they come back to the board.
Did you say that last part again?
Okay, the, the $6,200 cannot exceed that. That's a flat fee. It's reasonable, cone-sized percentage-wise, with the other loan we did do. And they have other paperwork to keep going on here to finish this loan here, to make it bank-qualified.
Current interest rates on these loans typically?
Uh, this one here's going to be 1.19, which is very low, but it's bank-qualified. We'll discuss a little bit later, information-wise.
Move it.
A motion is there, a second? I'll second it. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Having dispensed with those two set items, nine and 10, we are now back to item 11D, which was the reclassification of the Sheriff's Office Clerk's Discussion in Action.
I believe the question was posed where this was initiated. And this goes back four years prior to Ed's tenure, prior to Sheriff Drew's tenure as sheriff. Some additional duties and increase in volume of some other duties were initiated. And then Sheriff Parrott had provided these employees with a letter essentially promoting them, or essentially a letter of recommendation that they receive an increase in, in wages, okay? At that time, we had the predecessor of these two gentlemen in place. It was initiated that there was a study to update their job descriptions. And basically, what we do there is we take the existing job description, have the employees add to whatever duties, responsibilities, volumes, those things that have changed, then have their supervisors review that, sign off on it. This process was not completed, okay? Sadly to say, over a four-year period of time, it was taken up. of time, it was taken up and then dropped, and taken up and then dropped. So, finally, we are here, and that's the same process that I followed. I volunteered to do this simply because time, it was time that it needed to be taken care of. I got the commitment from these two gentlemen to cooperate in this effort. So, what I did was took their existing job description, had the girls go through, update any information that needed to be added to or taken out, presented that information to Sheriff Drew and Major Wick, and they reviewed it with their staff, signed off on it, then presented those job descriptions to Ed in HR where they were amended, and then took those amended job descriptions and sent them out to five of our comparables, basically asking them to identify positions within their organizations that were most comparable to these two positions in Woodberry County, and then provide pay scales for those positions that went along with that. Over the course of about two weeks, I received most of those back. There were a few that I didn't get back. A couple of them had a difficult time with one particular area, and that was the collection of DNA samples from sex offenders, okay? And because this task was normally performed by uniformed certified officers in those jurisdictions, and this is performed by what would be the current clerk two, and also processing them through the state laboratory. This would be, that person would actually be taking those samples. And two things that we, in our discussion to kind of speed this along, is the ever-growing number of sex offenders that this is required of. They also responsible for taking latent prints, hands-on with the sex offenders, and processing those prints through the system. And this number continues to grow, continues to grow. So, the volume of work in that capacity has jumped exponentially. The other side that jumped out was the change in the concealed weapons permits. And essentially, the numbers that we were looking at, and were verified by Sheriff Drew and his staff, was we've gone from about 70 applications a month to between 400 and 500 per month. And where it used to be, if you, to put this in perspective, it used to be a year-to-year renewal, and now we're getting these numbers with five-year renewals. So, as we get, you know, to the point where we're going to start renewing the five years, it's going to increase again. The other aspect of it is, is that the two other positions, those of the civil or warrant clerks, they are the backup for the clerk two. So, when she is absent with that position, she's on vacation or whatever, these additional duties fall to them. So, they are doing these increases. Plus, they are, there's a certain amount of continuity between these three positions, that they work together to our frontline, which they're dealing with the applicants that say come in. They're also dealing with the regular customer traffic and also the sex offenders as they are coming in per the requirement under law. And so, they work together on these things, but in absence of the current clerk two, the civil clerk and warrant clerk have to pick up those duties. So, essentially, that's where, where we believe that a move from a grade three to a grade four is warranted.
Grade three to grade five, grade two.
Grade, great, well, the grade, it's confusing. And that's something we're going to hope to address in our quarterly labor management meetings to come. The clerk two, which is a grade three, would move to a grade five. She would move to a clerk three at grade five. The civil slash warrant clerk, which is a grade two, would move to a senior clerk, which is a grade four. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Outstanding.
The only thing, can I just ask Ed, on the backup material that you have, we have a clerk two, grade three, to a grade five, and a civil clerk, grade two, to a grade three, not a grade four?
Grade three or grade four, and I did put grade three.
So, that's the 13,000 or 19,000, correct?
That's the 13,000. If you go to, if you bring them to grade four, that would be 19,000.
Are these the three people in your office?
Yes. It's been a long process.
Too long.
And they've been very patient. Maybe not as much to Preston, and he's, he's done a great job. But I can sense their, it all started back when, it always happens when that outgoing sheriff, you can write a line check, and I'd probably be the next guy. But they, you know, make a promise, and there it sat, and it sat for quite a few years. So, I'm fortunate that, and what happened at the HR, we lost a couple people. We lost JD, and then we lost Gloria, so all those things got put on the back burner. And so, with Preston and Ed and all of us working together, the clerical staff's been very, way above patience.
So, making this simple, we have three people. One goes to a five. Two would go to either a three or a four. What are you recommending?
Well, I recommend a four because it's drug out so long.
Four.
Ed? Comfortably the way I, I thought grade three would be adequate, but I can see why.
He's looking at county dollars, and I understand that, not that I'm not, but the fact is, it drug out four years, and it shouldn't have taken that long.
Four years ago, three would have been good.
The other, the other aspect to this is, is that, you know, it doesn't all fall on JD or his staff at the time, or Sheriff Parrott. There isn't a process by which, and I think, I think Ms. Smith addressed that, essentially, how is this initiated? Because there currently isn't a process by which an employee can say, hey, you know, things have really changed as far as my duties and the volume of work, and having a review process. That's another item that I believe that we would like to address during the quarterly labor management. I've got a couple of models that I would like to introduce, but I, you know, it's a long, drawn-out example, but I think that we've kind of figured out a way that if we kind of work together, we can get the information that we need so that a decision can be made and put this episode to bed so that we can, you know, move on and try to figure out a method for future events.
And I would add to it that I, there were in the file, and I finally, we finally found the file, it's kind of buried away, but we finally found the file, that there were references from Sheriff Parrott that made it appear that they were, that it was going to be recommended in the board, that these changes would take place. So, yeah, that's got to be pretty tough for the links.
I just have a question. So, to get, let's see if I can say this right, to a different grade that's based on duties, not years of service?
The grade is, the grade is the level of skill and the level of work effort, essentially.
You're correct.
The step is the years of service. So, you go up in grade, and you can go across to the steps, I guess, based on the years of, of senior.
I'm all for getting along and getting it done, but should this be part of negotiations?
No, for the simple reason that when we go into negotiations, we basically are looking at groups. We're looking at an entire classification, not just individuals within that classification. You know, as, and these guys had the same question. This is not a negotiation. I'm not here to negotiate. I was a fact-finder in this, and I said, hey, I took it on to gather the information out, simply because that's, that's something that I can do. I do that on a regular basis. If we were in open contract negotiations, we would look at all clerk twos, not just two people in clerk twos. What we're talking about is as a position changes, to go back four years, when JD was here, we were talking about standardizing the various clerk positions. You know, as you've probably gathered, it is a little bit confusing, grade threes, clerk twos, that type of thing. We were looking at standardizing, and some of the problems that we have is people are doing jobs that have evolved. And when we looked in this particular case, we had four years' worth of job descriptions, and every one was different. And we didn't have one that was current. The one that I asked for that to be current was actually two years old, and then we updated that. Individually, to answer your question, individual issues, like I said, there is a way of doing this type of thing, saying, please review my, my job description based on my new responsibilities. We're not going to do that in negotiations, because everybody else in the group is going to say, if they get it, we get it. And then we've got a train wreck.
Another part, the possible train wreck, is if one of these people retires or leaves or for whatever reason, the person going to fill that slot, what would they come in as?
They would come in at what their new classification would be.
Not with the classification.
We're talking about classifications, not people.
Yeah, not with the classification of the person prior to them.
Well, I think, I think I can answer that with, what, I'll think that up later. What happens is, if we move them from, say, you've got grade one to grade five, if we move that job to a grade five, anybody that comes into that job would be a grade five. Depending on their length of service, they would be a step one through five. The people that you have right now in these positions have been efficiently long, personally in the current grade three, that would move to grade five, would currently be in step five. But then, so it's the steps are the length of service, where an entry-level person for that position would come would be in whatever grade that particular job, that particular job happens.
And the expectations would be similar to the person that left.
Absolutely.
Right. Essentially, we're talking positions. We're not talking individuals.
Right.
We're talking positions. We're saying that the job has evolved from a clerk two to a clerk five, and the pay grade that goes along with that. Like I said, it's, it's very confusing, but we're talking about the position, not the individual.
Sir, any other discussion or questions?
Sheriff, could you comment on as far as an oversight perspective? Does it help your ability to supervise with?
Well, they do, I mean, obviously, they're going to be cheaper than a deputy sheriff. And I think as Preston found out, a lot of people...
Less expensive, Dave.
Huh?
Less expensive.
Okay, cheaper, less expensive. I like the other one. But anyway, often, that's a deputy's position. That's doing the DNA and a lot with the gun permits. Now, we have somebody that supervises that's a deputy, but his task, it's like everything we have, we're multitasking. So, I really believe that with what Preston said, as their workload has increased so much that the last four years, they've just kind of been...
Do you have 19 grand in your budget?
You know, probably not, but I'm hoping Dennis does. But I would say, what I did feel good about was on the pay difference, I think you said 13 to 19?
Yes.
When we talked about the next thing, I might have 4,000 that I could help on that, so.
2,000 short.
You know, I figured you guys could help out on that. So, there we go.
What is the will of the board?
I would move it.
What are, what are you moving?
The three to five and the two to four.
Second.
A motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was out of your budget, Dave, so.
Yeah, I figured, uh, figured out something.
You both can get together later and discuss all that. Okay, we are now to item 12, back again with the county sheriff. On item 12A is proposed language for a new ordinance relating to animal control. This is an information item, and he is deferring to Major Wick.
Good evening. Todd Wick, Sheriff's Office.
Do you want to give us some introductory comments on the proposed language, or maybe the impetus for why this is before the board?
We're just looking for an ordinance that would allow us to handle cattle litter at large on our roadways in the county a little bit differently. We, I'm asking that an ordinance be adopted here to allow it...
Question on the agenda, did, did you move this from architects up somewhere?
Yes, we moved them between items 13 and 14 after the sheriff's presentation and the Drainage District Association.
How many jackals do you see out there?
You know, I saw that in there, and not a lot.
Let me just, let me just, I was going to sit because my knee was hurting, but Mr. Gill is the expert on trustees. I went to his class. And here's our issue. We have a gentleman that never gets his cattle in. The cattle get on the highway, and it's on Old Highway 20. There's going to be an accident. We take several calls a week, and nothing's done. Now, my thought is, and Joshua, I think we're in agreement, is that the trustees eventually should come in and fix the fence, and then assess that bill on its taxes. Is that right, Mr. Gill? That's how it works? I, I did well in your class. And so, from there, if we're not getting anywhere, you know, we could go to this ordinance, but I really think that Mr. Brown runs that area of the dogs running at large and this and that. But my concern is, I need some teeth because we're constantly going to this call, and I'm trying to figure out how to rectify a problem before we have a bad accident and the cow ends up in somebody's windshield.
So, this is going to be swifter than going through the trustee process and notifying people with 30 days to look at the fence viewers? Is that the term, fence viewers?
You had conversations with the trustees?
We're just, this ordinance, if you go to page two, will make any animal, and obviously, we would use discretion here, but any domesticated animal or livestock that is running at large or remains at large would now be a simple misdemeanor, and we could write a citation for this. We've been, like the sheriff said, we've been repeatedly called to the same area for cattle litter out, and it is, it's, it's dangerous, and, and it's a hazard for anybody traveling on that road. And it's not if, it's when something serious is going to happen there, so.
Mr. Chair, it would seem to me that an ordinance is what you need.
Yeah.
Why don't you bring it back next week in ordinance forum and take it from there?
I did have a couple of comments from the standpoint of our office. I visited with PJ a little bit about this. His concern is with how broad the ordinance is at this point. I know that the, what was included in the packet is just a sample one, I think, that Monona County has, and we would want to be careful with how we tailored our ordinance. But the sample one in the packet includes dogs and cats, and the enforcement and prosecution of something that broad would be difficult. And if the main issue that we want to address here is with livestock, we're either going to have to remove the livestock and impound them, or get the fence fixed, and writing, writing the citation isn't necessarily going to address that issue. So, I, in the, in the one particular instance where we're having the issue, I do feel that the township trustees and the city that's fence yours is the way to address the issue. And they may not be excited about getting involved, but they have statutory duties in that regard. And, you know, basically, if, once they've been formally contacted and asked to do something, then they, they do have the statutory duty to set that process in motion.
Yeah, because my understanding is, we could take the cattle, and some farmer could feed them, and then that also would be assessed back to...
There, there's code sections related to that as well. The, the question is, as far as from, you know, what personnel are going to be the ones that are going to be out there playing cowboy, rounding up the cattle, and, you know...
There's some that work.
Right. And whether that's, you know, Gary's office, or your office, or who that would be.
It would be Gary's office.
It would be Gary's office, but I think it would be the trustees getting the cattle.
Let me just do a fence.
The trustees can deal with the fence. If it's, you know, if it's a situation where the cattle are actually out there and something needs to be done in regards to the impoundment, I do think that Gary has some livestock trailers that they may be specific to, or... that they may be specific to or the intent when those were purchased, I think were more like roadway accidents where you have a livestock trailer semi-involved.
I don't care how it extends, but something needs to be addressed.
But I do, when you said the trustees have not been formally told what to do or asked to.
I'm not sure the particulars, other than.
What does that mean formally, something from your office or something from the board? I mean, what does formal mean?
The way to set that in motion is that first there has to be a formal request from an adjoining landowner or it can be from, if the issue is with the cattle on the road, it could be from the county that's asking the landowner to fix the fence and that would be in the form of a certified letter. And then they have thirty days to fix the fence. If they don't fix it in that time, at that point, the trustees can be contacted to set a motion, the process of their fence viewing duties.
Have you done that yet, sent a, I mean, who sends it? The board, the sheriff's department, your office?
It could either be a neighbor, a neighboring landowner or.
No, 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 who's, who's going to inform the trustees?
Yeah.
Having a new understanding of what the trustees do, they don't have the skills to do this, folks.
That's why we're here.
You're going to scare them to death.
There's.
Maybe they need to be scared to death.
I mean, the, the process is set up in such a way that ideally it could be. It can be dealt with in an informal manner at the first step where you send a letter because if the trustees get involved, then on the backend where it's charged back to their taxes, there's also a five percent penalty that's included with that. So it's, it's definitely in the landowner's best interest to, to get the fence fixed. I mean, aside from all the potential liability.
Just from a public safety perspective, this has been happening and your, your worry is that notifying the trustees and then trustees having thirty days to notify, is that where this is headed that there's?
This has gone on for several years, but now with old twenty coming right past that place and if you were, some of you went, were at that correctionville meeting, some of you may have met the cattle on the road that night. I'm not sure, but there were. And that's a continual call that we get. Sorry, but I don't have the documentation, but I'd say it's a couple of times a week easily.
Yeah, we've been called there a dozen times in the last two months, probably.
That was Greg Stolman, Sheriff's Office, the night of the board meeting in Correctionville. Actually, Gary Brown and another deputy. It was going on while the board meeting was going on. The cattle were out and they were blocking D twenty-two and Highway thirty-one. And that's why if you, if we already noted Gary came in a little late to the meeting, that's what he was doing. He was helping deputies with the cattle that night.
And not only is this a danger to the motoring public, but it's tying up our deputies having to get there, I mean, this, to respond to the same thing over and over again.
So the way forward, this is an information item for tonight. I feel like we've had a good discussion. Is there anything else that wants to be asked? This will come back before us again in action form and we assume that you would allow the county attorney's office to review. Any proposal?
Yeah, I think we would just ask for input into the, into the ordinance.
Do you, do you want me to, Joshua, do you want me to work with you then? Because, I mean, do you expect anything from us at this point?
We should probably set something up with your office and PJ and I.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Did you have a model ordinance?
You've got it. This is it.
That's Monona County's, they use that.
And I, well, I fixed everything, but we're very county in it, so.
Do they handle it through their trustees?
No.
They, you know.
The county, I talked to the Monona County attorney and plagiarized their ordinance and he was more than happy to give it to me.
You know, I do, just before you go off and do your ordinance, when it does come back, it seems like this is a very specific problem though with cattle. So hopefully the ordinance will come back and be a little more specific because I can see if we pass this and sometimes it's enforced for the dogs and the cats and sometimes it isn't, then one problem always leads to another. So if it needs to be more specific and it's just this particular.
I, I would hesitate to, because as I mentioned a little bit ago, we give our deputies the discretion. I mean, if we get called out one time for a horse on the road and maybe a second time, we'll give a verbal warning to the horse owner, hey, get the fence fixed, otherwise then we allow our, our people the discretion. When it becomes a repetitive problem is when we would like to be able to use something like this ordinance to handle this, maybe with some more, like the sheriff said, with some more teeth in it.
And we can talk about some of those details as far as when we're coming up with the draft and, but some of those same issues are the reasons that we would have concerns about the enforcement and prosecution side of it, whereas, I mean, certainly the rural area is different than living in town and there's, there's going to be feral animals and, you know, you're not going to impound every cat that you see when you're driving down the road, so.
All right, well, with that, I thank you for your, your presentation and we will see this back, I'm sure, again.
I would certainly hope that there's some process to deal with, deal with the trustees. I wouldn't be sending a letter out there saying, guess what you get to do now. There ought to be some way to bring them up to speed.
I think Pat said it, though, the trustee's job is to fix the fences.
To oversee that process.
Very good. Item twelve B, the grant application for the two thousand sixteen seventeen U.S. Department of Justice COPS hiring program. This is an information item.
Yeah, go ahead.
Looking for some direction on whether or not the board would entertain the sheriff's office writing for this grant because there is a match for the county over three years.
Can you give us a breakdown of what that is and seventy-five percent?
It's seventy-five, twenty-five. I've worked with Gene from the auditor's office and the first year, if we were to hire one deputy on this COPS hiring program, it would cost us a little over eighteen thousand. Year two would be eighteen and a half and year three would be twenty-one, two eighty-six with increases in pay. And then after the third year, the county would have to pick up the full cost of that deputy sheriff.
I liked it up until that last part.
Yeah.
But let me just ask this, if at some point you're, you're rehiring through attrition, can that still be something that is?
You know, I mean, that's, that's an understandable question from your perspective here. I understand that. And I think that is, talked to Chief Young, he hires in anticipation of, he knows his people are retiring, like some will say, I'm retiring in December, so he gets them through the academy beforehand so they're ready by the time that guy leaves. Is that a possibility? I think it's something that we could work towards. Obviously, we would like to have more manpower, but if it, at the end of three years and there's a possibility to have that as absorbing it, definitely, we would like the extra body, but if it looks like times are tough, then I would stand here and say, we're not going to backfill that. I don't, I don't have issues. And if you want to say that as a group, we'll do it for the three years and the fourth year we'll fund it, but if somebody retires, you're not going to backfill it. I understand where that comes from, but I would tell you that, you know, we are short like everybody, but I think it's, what I would like to get to the point of doing, and I'm trying to get our guys that are close to retirement to give us an idea when that would be. And so if you're going to retire in December and if I could get somebody that may, a lot of our employees already work there and they want to be deputies, so they took that test. So the costs wouldn't be that much and very little, to be honest with you. So we would not have to be paying all the overtime if you look at all the costs that go into that, so. But if you want to say you would go along with it and after the end of the fourth year, whoever left, that guy would have that position, but it might not be five. I mean, I don't know when that next person's going to leave. I anticipate over the next three years that we probably could lose five people easily towards retirement, easily.
And at that point, without this, we'd be paying one hundred percent.
Right.
Year one, two, three, four, five.
So.
That's the, you know, that's the flip side.
Yeah, the upswing is you're getting it cheaper.
Yeah.
You know, excuse me.
Less expensive.
Less expensive. Thank you, Larry, appreciate that.
We, we've done this before.
Yes, yeah.
With employees, with the understanding that when the grant was over, the position was over.
Right, yep.
And you could do the same thing here and if there's a vacancy, that person can step right into that vacancy.
I would just like, and Larry, what I would like out of that is, I think what we did was absorbed them all, but when somebody left, then we never backfilled, if you remember, that's how it was. We just never.
Right, it's the same.
Exactly, same thing, yep. I mean, if, I came here hoping, but I do understand and I'm willing to, because in the back of my mind, I remember that you gave us a couple of extra here, okay, just a few months back, so if we all work together like that, it, it's a good marriage, so.
I personally think it's a good idea to go with it.
I do too. I, not being in law enforcement, but I did several months ago ride along with one of your deputies in the rural area and there, I asked them what our plan was for the whole day and it was to serve a warrant. They needed to get the second deputy in the same place and there was only two out there and eventually we never got to because of traffic stops, an accident, a jail transport, the one thing the deputy planned to do that day, they couldn't get to.
Right.
Because there was literally two people out there. So at some point in three years, we would look at hiring, I would anticipate, or have someone retire and, and without utilizing this, at least some entry points when we do hire a deputy, then we are paying a hundred percent.
Right.
From the beginning. It's, it's just kind of a lost benefit. It does recur, but if we plan, it'll help us.
Yes.
Did he let you write in the front sheet?
Yeah, he did, he did.
We gave him a gun.
Got to flip the switch too.
Well, this is an information item for tonight that we need to bring back for this week. Does that sound fair?
Right, and we, you know, it's all subject to approval, not only from you, but we're not guaranteed that we'll get it, but.
I was just looking for some direction on whether I should begin the process in writing the grant. That's the other side of this. I'm writing the grant, so there's no guarantee we're going to get it.
But in order to give that direction, we need to have board action, is that correct?
If the consensus of the board is to go forward with submitting the grant, he can write it up and then I imagine it would come on the agenda when you're ready to submit it. It can be done that way.
Sure. I believe there would be an MOU that would have to come in front of the board too before the grant's submitted.
So the consensus of the board to go ahead and sort that grant process and come back before the board? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just have one question. Are we done with my part of the?
Yes.
I'm not going to be able to make it for the group here, unfortunately, because I get to give my daughter an award scholarship, so. She didn't take after her father, she took after her mother. She's going to go to Wayne State where I did and so I told her I left the bar not very high, so I know she could get over it, so. So I have to leave to go give that award, but thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, item number thirteen is the Iowa Drainage District Association with John Torbert, presentation of the annual report, and that will be followed by item eighteen F, which is a law enforcement center expansion update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to be here tonight. Spend a few minutes updating you with what's going on with respect to drainage on a statewide basis. Talk about three things briefly. First of all, the state legislature, of course, has adjourned. We did have two state appropriations from the Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, which we watched very closely and we were successful in getting dollars appropriated for both those things and that's basically the CREP program and the Ag Drainage Well Closure program. So, so far, the bills have been passed, the governor hasn't signed them yet, but we're feeling pretty good about where we stand on those bills right now. Frankly, with regard to the rest of the legislative session, we have pulled in our horns and frankly are more in a monitoring mode because we have made the decision as a board of directors that we don't want to do anything potentially that alters the duties and responsibilities of trustees of drainage districts when we have a federal lawsuit pending. Because any activity that has a change in your definition of responsibilities and duties could have a potential negative impact on the lawsuit. So we had several pieces of legislation that we could have been involved in this year that were probably would have been good things to be involved in and we just made a decision that we're not going to get involved in those things until this lawsuit is resolved. Second thing I would talk about, I have visited with you before about the proposal from the Environmental Protection Agency on the waters of the United States. As you probably know, that rule was actually put in effect by EPA last fall. When they did it, they were promptly sued by approximately thirty states, I think it was twenty-seven or twenty-eight, and Iowa is, is one of the states that filed suit to block implementation of the rule. They were also sued by several national ag and commodity groups and so far, the implementation of that rule is on hold. Court in Cincinnati has put the rule on hold, so right now, everything is just in sort of a holding pattern until we see further court action. So the rule technically has been implemented, but it hasn't until the courts reach some resolution on that issue. The last thing I'll visit with you about, no surprise, is the lawsuit, the Mine Waterworks lawsuit, and let you know where we stand with that. Again, as, as you're well aware, we had three counties representing ten drainage districts that were sued in March of last year by the Mine Waterworks. And basically, I need to break down that suit into two parts because it's important that you know that for, for understanding where we are right now. The suit has two basic parts. The first part is federal and that is an allegation by the Mine Waterworks that drains district outflow should be, should be regulated as a point source. And you all, as trustees of drainage districts, should have to receive, go out and get what are called NPDES permits, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits, from the DNR to be able to allow to continue have, you know, land being drained in your county. So that is a federal allegation that seeks to bring drainage under the Federal Clean Water Act. Set that aside. The second part of the suit, which I sort of classify as, let's throw a bunch of stuff on the wall and see what sticks, is a number of allegations that were filed under state law against those ten drainage districts. And those allegations, I have to read them so I don't forget them. Public nuisance, statutory nuisance, private nuisance, guilty of trespass, unlawful taking of property without just compensation, and that the Iowa code and decisions of the Iowa Supreme Court have developed a constitutionally defective immunity for drainage districts that violates the Mine Waterworks due process and equal protection rights. So those are all state issues. So what has happened since then is suit gets filed in March. In the fall of last year, the attorneys representing the drainage districts filed a motion to dismiss. So there was a hearing held here by the judge in control of that case at that time. There was hearing, hearing held the week of Christmas on the motion to dismiss. As a result of that hearing, in January, the judge issued an order and essentially said that I'm going to take all those state issues and I'm going to ship those. and essentially said that I'm gonna take all those state issues and I'm gonna ship those down to the State Supreme Court. So that long list of private and public nuisance and taking of property and all that stuff, all those state issues, the federal judge bundled those, shipped them to the State Supreme Court, and said, "State Supreme Court, you give me a ruling on the validity of those claims, and once you give me a ruling, give that ruling back to me, and I'll make a decision on whether to dismiss the lawsuit or not." So, right now, all of the focus has shifted away from federal court and it's shifted to the State Supreme Court. So the State Supreme Court has collected information from both sides, voluminous, as you might expect. IDDA, on the vote of our Board of Directors, also did file the front of the court brief with the State Supreme Court to support the three counties. So that's where the process stands right now. The Supreme Court has not scheduled a hearing yet. They appear to be somewhat fast-tracking this, but fast-tracking in court terms, I think, is different than how most people see fast-tracking. But they have not scheduled a hearing yet. The federal case was supposed to be heard in August. And as you know, that has been postponed, and I think it's largely been postponed due to the State Supreme Court issue. And I don't know if there has been a date yet set on that, but I'm led to believe that the case will now be scheduled for sometime probably early in 2017. So in the meantime, the case continues to churn. And I think the last report that I saw was that the three counties had incurred legal fees of approximately $900,000. I wouldn't be surprised at this point if it's a number north of that, because I'm sure fees are being incurred every day of the week as the lawyers do their work. So, you know, the counties are probably at a million dollars in expense, I don't know that to be true, but I'm sure it's close to that. And we're still at this point, haven't had a real decision, you know, a real argument on the case before a court. So, IDDA has several different ways we could be involved in the case. Number one, we could intervene. That is a very expensive process, the good thing is, is it puts you inside the case. Puts you at the table when all the discussions are made, makes you an integral part of the process. The bad thing is, you're an integral part of the process, and it's a very, very expensive, potentially expensive thing to intervene in the case, and we're not a big organization, you know, we've got a budget of about $200,000, so. You know, talking about spending $30,000 or $40,000 to do an intervention in a lawsuit is a lot of money for us. So so far, what we've decided to do is to basically stay on the sidelines and provide assistance indirectly. And we have done so through our law firm and, you know, like filing the front of the court brief is a good example of that. And we will continue to support the counties in any way we can as the case moves forward. So that's where we are, and I'd be happy to respond to questions.
Thank you very much for your precise and succinct, very informative presentation. Are there questions, or is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your time today, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
All right, item 18F is moved up in the agenda to the Law Enforcement Center expansion update. We have with us several individuals, CMBA architects, Brian Crichton, in conjunction with the Goldberg Group Architects, vetting the possibility of an LEC expansion on a third level, as well as maybe some changing avenues of opportunity. So, thank you very much for being here, and tried to move you up as much as we could.
Yeah, we appreciate that, thank you. Brian Crichton with Cannon Mossbrigger Architects from here in Sioux City. I do have a small packet I'd like to hand to the board, if I could.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. What Brian is handing out is some confidential information that we didn't want on public record, because it's got some prints and things on it that shouldn't be public knowledge. The action before you is to change the direction in the original contract with CMBA. If you look at paragraph one of the original contract, it spelled out the focus would be maintained on the third floor or the recreational area on the roof at the LEC. The action item is requesting a change of that focus to other possible areas within the LEC.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks, Kenny. With me tonight, I have Larry Goldberg with Goldberg Group Architects, and Kevin Rost, also from his office, and they'll weigh in here as well. But the packet in front of you, I just want to quickly go through that. The second page, we began our look at the LEC upper rec yard specifically in terms of structural capability. There's been a previous study of that space, and it came back with a certain recommendation. And in looking at it, the original finding was probably correct, we're not questioning that. But there is some additional information that probably that engineer didn't have at the time. So, that second page, if you look at, you can see the upper rec yard, you see kind of in the middle of the page sort of shows some basketball court kind of space. Off to the left of that is a structural diagram of the space. And in essence, what we are able to do because of structural capability up there is very limited in terms of placing walls for use of that space. Specifically, the center yellow band, if you will, the bar, that is where we could place heavier walls, which is typical CMU walls, or even structural steel panel walls for jail use. So, as you can see, if we go in a different direction, the capability just isn't there to support that heavy of a load. The original finding by the engineer said 100 pounds per square foot, which is fine. But when you compound that over a height that we're talking for specific use in this area, we're talking five to eight times that amount in weight that would be needed, a capacity, structural capacity. So, again, the yellow bar in the center is one space, one place where we can place walls without adding huge amount of structural capability to the building to support that floor system. In the upper right corner is a detail section, and then the second pa, the third page of your packet shows some additional wall construction. It's a section cut through a section of the upper rec area. And basically, what this is showing is, it looks like when you walk up there, it is a structural CMU concrete masonry unit wall construction. When you look at the actual details of the building, what you're seeing when you walk in that area is a very thin veneer of four-inch CMU, very thin piece. And then the backup to that is eight-inch concrete block that is broken up and supported by the original concrete structure of the building. So it's really not a continuous wall system as it appears. And when you do look up there, there is quite a bit of cracking that you can see in that four-inch veneer. There's some concern there, two reasons, one is deflection, which is, if you think about a ruler, a yardstick, and you put, you know, weight in the middle, that deflection, basically, that's what that means. This building has deflected over 30 years, it probably isn't gonna move anymore. But when we do change the loading, if we were to add additional load to this, there could be additional movement and, which would impact those walls up on that third floor. So we'd have to have some measures, some additional structural measures to take care of that. So, the second item with that is the cracks over time. With the maintenance that may have happened or may not have happened over time, there's been some water infiltration into that system. And basically, it's presenting itself, or has presented itself, from what the jail staff has told us, of some dripping internally into the cell blocks. So we know that there's some water in that system, in that wall section. If we do anything up there, we're gonna have to tear that apart to fix it, so that's additional cost potentially. So, I just want to address that. The next page, if you flipped to that, the blue is existing space on, actually, one page, this page, sorry. This page that shows blue and red, if you will. Blue and orange-red, the blue is the existing space up at the upper rec yard. You can see there's some additional red space that's around the blue on the center of the page. That is additional wall construction, roof construction, that we would need to create at that third level. In addition to the elevator extension to that third level. The red is built over a lower roof area of the south half of the building, which is not structurally built to support that additional loading that would need to be there. So we'd have to do some additional work structurally to support that red space. That red space specifically is providing egress capability for inmates and staff in the event of a fire, or whatever it may be. We need to have access to two stairs and that elevator as well. And that's what that additional space is being shown as, okay?
If you had only one egress, how many people could you have?
If we had only one stair, and Kevin's probably the better expert at this, or Larry.
If you limited the 10 occupants in that space, commissioner supervisor.
So 10 occupants up there. With the second one, we're able to go upwards of, I believe, around 125, I believe, correct, Kevin?
Correct, yeah.
That additional capacity is needed, obviously, the bed count that we were asked to maybe potentially have up there is 40 to 50. So 10 does not meet the needs of the jail staff, okay? So, there's some pretty good concerns with that third floor space. Structural concerns mainly, not to mention some of the operational costs, additional staff requirements, that type of thing. So, one of the things that we looked at, and mainly because the space has become available on, I guess, first level because of the clerks movement, but second floor is, could we create some housing space on the second floor? So that next page that's blue, that's all blue, basically shows the space that's available on second floor for additional housing. And we're just in the initial steps of, can we create enough bed space, basically, in that area to meet the needs? But you can see that it's approximately 3,200 square feet of space. This is the existing jail administration area on second floor. So, obviously, there'd have to be some sort of movement of that space as well to accomplish this. But that's what Kenny brought up earlier on our contract, we were specifically to look at third floor. But our assessment of that third floor is, it's not the best use of money, long-term, so. And from an operational standpoint, it just causes a lot of other concerns for the jail staff. So, that is the packet, Larry, and if you want to say a few words as well.
Hi, it's nice to be back, and I haven't seen some of you since we interviewed, and it's nice to be at work with Brian and the team on this. I'll go very quickly, on the third floor, if you can't structurally support walls, for instance, in every, roughly every seven feet, then we can't do the most important kind of housing, long-term, you need, which isn't dormitories, it's cells. Arranged in a way that allows the jail to have increased classification. And so, long-term, given jail standards, given federal regulations that have come on in the last number of years, we don't think moving forward with more dormitory housing serves the county's interests. And if the alternative is a prohibitively expensive third-floor retrofit or adaptive reuse, then that's where these questions arise from. It's not whether we can overcome the structural and architectural challenges. We can, although I think they'll be awful expensive to do. It's that what do you get out of it when you're done? So Brian mentioned the second floor, and it comes with a built-in advantage, and that is, is literally adjacent to central control. So what it means is, with a minimum of effort, you're immediately adjacent to direct visual control and regulatory control. It also means you have an interior space that you can renovate without nearly the concerns for exterior exposure, weatherproofing, movement of the building, differential settlement, all of those kinds of things. And it means that what we can do there is create a series of pods, maybe some small dorms, we've just started looking at the geometry, and several cell pods that give them 34 to 44 beds. We're not at the 50 that we hoped for, but we think from a cost standpoint, from a staffing standpoint, from a classification standpoint, it represents a smarter use of county funds and intention, short and long term. So with that, I, we're certainly not prepared to make a formal recommendation, but a request that the Board of Supervisors allow this team to study the second floor and first floor option, and come back in front of you, and at that point, be able to make a recommendation based on a little more detailed study.
So you would be moving the sheriff's administration from that second floor area, potentially into the clerk of courts area?
Yes, sir.
And having potentially 34 to 44 inmates housed in that area?
Yes, correct. And so far, we've done some very preliminary diagrams that show that we might end up with a couple of cell pods, and then two or three small dorms. As I said, we've just started to look at it. But we just think the adjacency to central control, the interior nature of that work, we've talked about special needs with the sheriff, with Greg Stallman, with staff, and we think from several different types of uses, it offers you much more bang for your buck.
Heating and air conditioning?
What's that?
Heating and air conditioning?
Well, that's a good question. What we think from our MEP, from our MEP engineers, is that if we do modular steel cells with rear chases, then it means, and I've got pictures to show you, I'm not gonna worry about that this evening. We can keep most of the utilities above the slab. So it means they're in a chaise, a secure separate space between the back of the cell, as your security envelope, and the existing outside walls, okay? That's key for two reasons, one, we're not affecting the slab materially. And from a maintenance standpoint, it's far better. But the other thing is, it means the outside wall gets affected very, very little. The window placement, everything that's there now stays, okay? There are windows on the outside of the cells that don't necessarily need to line up with the outside windows that are there. They're entitled to three square feet of natural light. The court's defined it as the ability to discern a change in the time of day, or change in the weather, or both, all right? So, another advantage. But what it means is, it gives us the mechanical space to put a self-contained mechanical system, heating and cooling system, right there in that corner, with a small trunk ducts, and very efficient, to just condition that area of the building in and of itself. So we don't have to tie into stuff, we don't have to do a bunch of adapting the existing mechanical system and other parts of the second floor. It's really kind of a remarkable set of circumstances that allow us, hopefully with your permission, to take advantage of this set of circumstances. And that's what we're asking you to do, is allow us to explore it.
And we have an elevator and a stairwell.
Elevator and stairwell right there, yes, sir.
One of the questions that I asked Sheriff Drew, I know he's not here right now to be able to answer this, is the aerial overview to keep in mind was, the original intent was to be able to close Prairie Hills potentially. And it's over $1 million in repairs and utilities costs the next 10 years. And I said, if this was able to be done, given the fortuitous move of the clerk of courts over here, would you be able to accomplish that? And he said, absolutely. So I think it's something that we really ought to explore, and that might be very timely, given that we're looking at an inside space.
Yes.
For purpose.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I've got a lot of them.
Yeah, I've got a lot of them. What you're saying is the recreation area cannot be used. That's gone.
I think so. I think that's a fair statement, sir.
So you're down to the second floor, then?
And the first floor.
I'm thinking about the second floor, and you think you've got thirty-four hundred square feet here, there?
I think the, the number was thirty-two hundred, thirty-two sixty, I believe, on second floor.
My big concern is, we don't know, I, I haven't been involved with this at all, so I have no idea what the sheriff's thoughts are with the jail personnel, you know? And moving that group from the second floor down to the first floor, I don't know what that does as far as security or anything else.
Well, the administrative offices itself can exist outside the security envelope.
Right, and I understand that.
The jail posts will remain.
But you're moving it a floor down, not just moving it away. The costs, what kind of costs are you anticipating?
We, we don't know yet.
Yeah, that's hard to say. I mean, at this point, we haven't investigated.
Can you do it for a hundred thousand, or five hundred thousand, or a million, or? You gotta have a ballpark figure in your head.
We can have thirty days to look at it, it will have a much better idea for you. But at this point, we cannot put a number on it at this point.
So you're looking for us to refocus the direction instead of, because the original contract language was to study the outdoor recreational area, and if it's not going to be doing that, you need direction to still do the schematic design in phase one, but to be looking elsewhere, because otherwise you wouldn't be fulfilling the contract.
And you have a budget that was established for the project.
Right.
We certainly have budgetary responsibility that, that we accept. None of that's the issue. We're just asking for you to allow Brian and his team to study this alternative because of the advantages we think it, it, it offers. The, the, i- i- if it ends up costing less or costing more, we'll report to you, hopefully within, you know, like Brian said, thirty days.
The cost, the cost is paramount, but so is the security, and so is the working, I haven't talked to Stallman or Lynette on their thoughts about moving down from the second, second floor to the first floor.
I haven't, Greg Stallman, sheriff's office, I haven't formally, but Kenny and I have already had conversations. We've ran out of space in jail admin anyways, we can't keep up with the number of people coming to the window, there's, it's just not a conducive space for us to work. So when you talk administration, moving downstairs, it does not impact the jail or security whatsoever. And the addition of thirty-four to forty-four more beds, we're there, we need them, our female population's maxed out, we have no place, we have two sections to move females back and forth in. But as far as administrative, it's a non-player, it doesn't matter where I'm at, or where Lieutenant Harlow, or Winger, or whoever, it doesn't matter where our office is, and that's what you're talking about.
Right.
We'd also be able to better serve everyone at that counter down there. The number of people, instead of having them lined up down the steps down to the bottom, we'd be able to handle more people at one time, so, I don't think the admin part's a big player in this.
The other thing that I've been thinking about is we were gonna have to rent a big crane to get all that stuff up on the roof. This has an elevator, stairway, no security issues, so there's no locking up prisoners as they come through, it's wide open.
Correct, I think there's some logistic positives here, which hopefully will translate to, to budget savings when we do take it out for bid, if we get to that point, so.
We got our foot in the door, we're either gonna have to walk away or see what's in the room. I think, I think we need to keep going ahead with this. I don't see why we wouldn't when we think of the alternative, long-term.
I just don't know how many Band-Aids you can put on this.
Thirty-four to forty-four beds is a big Band-Aid, that's a, that's maybe not a Band-Aid, maybe that's a cast.
I would characterize this as a surgery rather than the Band-Aid. The Band-Aid I think's out of Prairie Hills that.
What, and that, that has been known for, ever since it was open? But you're just taking the thirty beds you have out there and moving them down here, but what are we gonna have when we're done? And I don't know that you're not throwing good money after bad. If you want to go ahead and let these gentlemen explore that, you know, I'm not gonna stop you.
I would make, make a motion that we go ahead and direct them to change their focus from the penthouse to the second floor area.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, and safe travels. You are on your way to?
We're going back home to St. Joe.
Okay, be safe.
See you soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We dispense with item eighteen F. We are now to item fourteen, secondary roads with Mark Narra, and the first item is A, consideration of a permit to work in the highway right-of-way.
Mark Narra, Woodbury County engineer. Just gotta get the ready sheet of paper out here. The first one is Brett Johnston, working for the landowner who's requested a permit to work in the right-of-way to improve the east ditch along Hancock Avenue to provide better farm drainage. This ditch kind of filled in during the flooding in twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen, and it isn't working well right now for either the landowner or us. I recommend approval of the permit.
Move it.
Second.
Is there a second? Second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B, consideration of approval of contract and bond for project number FEMA eleven dash seventy-three dash nine-seven.
The contract and bond has been returned by the successful contractor for FEMA eleven project. Contract is with Neewaner Construction for a hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and forty cents. This is for repair and enhancement to a stream protection weir.
Move it.
Second. There's a motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item fourteen C, consideration of approval of the contract and bond for projects HC eleven-nine and HC eleven-ten.
These are two additional weir repairs. The FEMA money is being supplemented with Hungry Canyon's money, that's not only allowing us to repair the projects to their pre-flood condition, which is covered by FEMA, but also to improve those structures and make them more resilient to future floods.
We like Hungry Canyons.
Well, we've, we've brought home a lot of grant money from there.
And move it.
Second.
A motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion has carried five to zero. Item D, consideration of approval of contract and bond for PCC paving project RC dash CO nine-seven, et cetera.
Just real quick, I want to recognize Ben Kussler's work. He's been heavily involved in Hungry Canyons throughout his career here, and he works very hard on those. He's one of the most experienced designers of those type structures in the states, so. The other item we have here is the RISE project for the new road going down to AGP. The successful bidder on the project was Goddard-Bursen Smith Construction Company. Contract and bond have been returned. Total bid price, one million, four hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
Move the term, be authorized, sign.
Second.
Is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item E, consideration of approval plans for project LB L two-twelve dash seven-three dash nine-seven.
We're getting this project prepared for a June letting. It is one of our, I, I don't have the plan sheet with me today, I'll have to bring it next week for your signature. We're still out a couple of weeks from advertisements, so we're still all right on this one. We're replacing a short-span narrow bridge that is posted with a six-ton posting, I believe, with a single-barrel box culvert that will adequately carry the water in the area.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item F, consideration of consultant services contract for an interchange justification report.
Gonna hand a few of those off to the chair and allow him to exercise his pen for a moment while we discuss this one. We've been working with McClure Engineering Consultants on a project for the Woodbury County interchange justification report process. This is to look at a new interchange being constructed somewhere between exit one-thirty-five at Port Neal Road and exit one-forty-one, which is the airport exit. This proposed interchange would, would be serving the CF Industries area, Sabre Industries, the Trinity Rail Yard, if, if it ever comes back, but, but it would really serve that area south of the airport and give an alternative interchange. It also serves the Dogwood, Dogwood Trail, I believe is the name of the road within Sergeant Bluff. It'll tie together Highway seventy-five on the east side of I-29, Port Neal Road on the west side. This project was originally looked at in two thousand and five, and some preliminary study work was done. That study work has been incorporated into this current agreement. Some of the environmental work, archaeology, some of the biological studies that have been looking for endangered species, and some of the historical work that was done on century farms, has been added to this project. This contract initially approves phases A, B, C, and E of the project, which is the, the basic study of the location. Once that part is done, they'll be coming back to the board for the approval of phase D, which is the actual final environmental studies that will be nailing down the position of the prod, or of the interchange upon completion. We're looking at this being an approximately two-year process to get through this study. Cost-sharing agreement has been signed between the cities of Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff, Salix, the Siouxland Initiative, Woodbury County, and DOT is also kicking in a third of the project, up to two hundred thousand dollars. You have a signed agreement with the Department of Transportation for the two hundred thousand dollar share they have. At the county attorney's recommendation, contacted city of Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff. It's in Sergeant Bluff's minutes, I think it's from the, I want to say twenty-seventh of January twenty-fifteen, that they are agreeing to pay their share of the project. What they're proposing to do is pay their full eighty-seven hundred dollar share after July first. They have it budgeted in fiscal year twenty-seventeen. Sioux City and Woodbury County have basically the lion's share of these two agreements, and Sioux City we would bill as Woodbury County pays the bill. DOT, we would also be able to get reimbursements as we pay the bills, which is a thirty-day billing period under the contract terms. Siouxland Initiative is looking at putting down a proportional share of their forty thousand dollars for the first phase, that four hundred and sixteen thousand. I think it'll be somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five thousand that they'll put down initially, and then when we approve phase D, they would pay their next chunk.
And I believe we were very clear to McClure Engineering, it will not exceed the six hundred thousand.
And there is a committee that is appointed in this process that involves headquarters staff at DOT, that involves local governmental officials, will have people from Sergeant Bluff, Sioux City, Woodbury County, that'll be intimately involved in this process, that will be keeping the contractors' attention firmly pressed to that part of the plan.
But here it says six, doesn't it say six forty-eight?
Six forty-eight, four oh eight, and that is the worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Again, that second part will not be start, commenced, though we'll be coming back to the board for approval of that part, so this part of the budget, we're anticipating will be lower.
Yes.
Once phases A, B, C, and E are completed. The goal again is, that two hundred thousand is pretty much the environmental study, and the narrower we make that window where that work's going to be done, the less costly that part of the study will be.
And I understand that, but with their, I mean, it's okay to say we're gonna hold them to six hundred thousand, but if something emerges in that environmental study and you have to expand the narrow area, then you almost have to do it. I mean, so at that, or else not.
At that point, or?
At that point, you would.
That's another discussion.
But again, the board.
But just to say you have to keep it, I understand that's the goal, but it is possible that something will emerge. I, I'm, hopefully it won't, and I think most people think it won't, but.
We hope it won't.
Well, we were at seven hundred and fifty thousand.
But you're correct, Jackie.
Huh?
You are correct, that, that potential exists. And again, this is our, our worst case, looking at those environmental concerns. Now, the board is the primary contracting authority with this. It's your initial payment, we're relying on our partners. We've now got it in writing from Sergeant Bluff, Sioux City, and DOT, the three biggest ones, along with the word of Siouxland Initiative, that they will be paying their share of these project costs.
I'd make a motion to approve the consultant services contract.
Do we need an amount in there? I mean, are we approving just?
You're a phase, right now you're approving phases A, B, C, and E.
Just phase one.
And, and I would like to see that as part of your motion, too.
Right.
Okay.
A, B, C.
But Mark and I, you that are.
A, B, C, and E.
And D.
E, not D.
E.
Move it, seconded or not?
I think, I think that that's appropriate to do.
Okay.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Mark. I have a plethora of stuff there, if you want to check and make sure that I didn't miss something.
Missed anything, sure.
We will now recess the board of supervisors meeting and convene the county drainage district trustees meeting. Item fifteen A is approval of the May tenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes. Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and I'm going to make my vote an abstention, because I was not here, so it passes four to zero with one abstention. Item fifteen B is request for repair work.
We had a request from, for repair work immediately upstream of the Hancock Avenue Bridge, that's that last old large trust bridge north of two-hundred-ninetieth Street. We have about a hundred-foot-wide hole in the dig, very similar to what we repaired as part of the work that was done south of the two-hundred-ninetieth Street Bridge on the hair and, can't remember the name of the other landowner there, but it's very similar work in that nature. It's looking like the work should come in somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars. There is a contractor working in that area that I could negotiate that price with, asking to get three contractors in for a very small job, to give us bids is, is asking a lot of those people. If the board would give me the authority, my, my suggestion would be to allow me to negotiate with, with the contractor who's down there working in the area, it's Brett Johnston, the same guy that we just gave the permit to, and he's within a quarter-mile of where that necessary repair is. If I can't get a satisfactory price, I will call an additional contractor, but that's my recommendation for dealing with this one. It is a very small repair, but it also would, if we do get a, an event on that stream, it would quickly flood this gentleman's field.
I would move that we allow the repair work with the engineer's discretion in acquiring a contractor.
Second.
You want to cap that at fifteen?
You want to cap that at 1,500, or?
Yeah, 15.
I would be willing to agree to that cap, not to exceed $1,500. If it does, again, I will go out for a second quotation.
Okay.
A motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We will now adjourn the County Drainage District Trustees meeting, continue the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Item 16, Board Administration, Karen James. Item A is approval of lifting of tax suspension for an individual with the initials CG.
Move it.
Motion is there, second. Second. Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. 16B, approval of appointment of Mark Monson to the Community Action Agency of Sulent Board of Directors. All move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion.
Isn't that just your appointment?
What's that?
I say I don't know why that has to be voted on. I think that was the appointment of the chair.
Do we need formal actions? It's a recommendation of Gene Logan, and your term is expiring, and so do you normally take action?
I think there's, three or four have, are appointed by the county board.
Okay.
Not just me.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Probably a lot of Epstein.
And with your abstention, it passes four to zero. Item 16C is approval of two resolutions, saying can you commit any years of service?
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion, and this is for Mark Peterson and Rose Griffith. Thank you very much for your years of service and abstention. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I believe we've all signed those, Karen, those are sitting on that list, to your will.
And I have the other ones I'll bring in.
Next week.
From the senior center.
Next week, we'll get to those.
Karen, I'm checking that dates for Mark. I think he's got a lot longer service than that.
You got that from John.
I'd check with Rick then, because it might not be correct up there, I don't know. I'm thinking he's worked over 30 years.
You'll double-check again? Thank you very much. Good catch. 16D, discussion on bank-qualified bonds. Dennis Wettler, information.
Okay, this is just information here. Every year, the county or any governmental bodies such as any city in the county can give up to $10 million worth of exemption, bank-qualified sign-offs. In our case here, we have $10 million. We haven't used it this year except for the county CIP program, which we did today, and then down, probably next month, we'll be doing another loan for the TIF projects I have listed on the front page. So those are qualified, and are bank-qualified, and the reason we want them under that is because we get lower interest rates and they're tax-exempt bonds on federal basis. That does leave us $6,349,000 for the rest of calendar year. On the other two pages here, it just kind of goes in a little detail what a bank-qualified loan is. The ones that we loan out to 501(c)(3)'s that qualify does not go against our debt limit. The ones we do would go against our debt limit because we're using tax dollars to pay for them. It's pretty self-explanatory here, but I just wanted to update you where we were with our bank-qualified loans.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion?
Is there any? Tristan?
Um, there was, but the interest dropped off, so this money here is available.
This is what we gave, like, Jackson recovery?
Yes, Jackson, Camp High Hopes.
Right.
We've done quite a few of them here.
And hopefully, we keep that status as tax exempt, because I know the MACO has that as an issue, that they stay tax exempt.
Right.
All right, very good. Thank you, Dennis. Item 17, Honors Office, Gene Jessen. Item A is to discuss and approve the 2015 business property tax credits payable, 2016, 17, allowed by the city assessor.
Right, these are just the business property tax applications that the actual city and county assessor both take in. It's just really for you folks to, by ABAC code, need to approve them.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B, discuss and approve the 2015 business property tax credits payable, 2016, 17, disallowed by the city assessor.
Move it.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. 17C, discuss and approve the 2015 business property tax credits payable, 2016, 17, allowed by the county assessor.
Love it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Gene, thank you very much. Appreciate your help. Item 18, Building Services, Kenny Schmitz. Item A is a courtroom number 203, emergency repair and a 60-foot high lift rental.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. Items 18A and 18C before you are expenses related to the emergency repair to the courthouse, courtroom 203. 18A is requesting approval of contract with Beersbach Equipment and Supply for a 60-foot high lift rental for the next three months, and the amount of $7,080.
Move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item 18C is the emergency project courtroom repair, interior, exterior, surface analysis.
Item 18C is again related to courtroom 203 repairs. This is for surface analysis testing. These surfaces are required to do some paint testing in relation to those repairs.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
There's a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Item 18D, we are to the Woodbury County HVAC control head system. Kenny, let me give some introductory remarks here.
Yes, item 18D is requesting approval of funds to replace the current, what I call the control head system, to Woodbury County's HVAC systems. What this will allow us to do is, as we currently have one location, to look at several buildings and to monitor what those buildings are doing. Our current system is non-functioning and outdated. This would virtually upgrade that system, replace it with new software. That would include graphics, so it would be more user-friendly. It would also set us up in the future to communicate with all of those different buildings through their own control panels to allow us to see what those buildings are doing. And eventually, as we did upgrades at the other buildings, we would be able to control at some point those buildings.
Very good. I understand we have some gentlemen from Star Control with us. Thank you for your patience in waiting through the meeting. Is there discussion, questions?
We want the systems to work. I'd move it.
There's a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item E, Woodbury County HVAC front end control.
Item 18E is also related to the item you just approved on the front head control. This contract on 18E would administrate and oversee the installation of that head-end system and help with design and the graphics that would be utilized there and the connections that would be required for each of the buildings attached to that system. And this contract would be for Vega Group to oversee that installation.
You're good. Is there discussion or questions?
Move it.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item?
I did have one additional item I'd just like to pass on to the board, and I don't want to portray this as a fix-it system or something that'll give us greater control as we're done with this part of the front-end system. This will only, this is only a first step, if you will, in bringing our system together, where someday, as we upgrade the different building panels and controls, that we'll be able to see those and upgrade those systems, which will allow us to control that we will someday possibly have. So this is just a very first step in that process. It won't allow us to improve those creature comforts at this point, but it'll set us up for that in the future.
Sort of step one of that, in the diagnostics troubleshooting and greater visibility of it.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Item 19, Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Monson, on the county ownership of the Anthem Courthouse is an information item.
I believe you had something from Collins Agency, which I have received from the mayor of Anthem. They have carried liability and umbrella on that facility for 25 years. They also sent the write-up from the mobile record, and basically what they're saying is that they would be happy to turn the title of that building over to us with the stipulation that if we ever gave it up, it would go back to Anthem. They however would like a little money for that action. I think we probably, to make it legal, we'd have to give them a buck, but I think they're looking at probably 10 grand. That's what he said on the phone, anyway. I would suggest that we consider how much we want to give them, if any. I think we sort of are responsible. They spent quite a bit of money on insuring the place on our behalf and their behalf. Their attorney is Barry Thompson, I think out of Kingsley, and I would suggest the starting point would be Joshua and Mr. Thompson to maybe put some words together on what that agreement would look like.
But you would need a direction, and the board would want to, I mean, did you say that?
Yeah, as far as, as far as the legal documents, I mean, it should be fairly routine, but we will kind of need to know what the agreement is going to be as far as compensation going each way, and we can put together like a right of first refusal for upon sale, so that, the legal document side of it shouldn't be too difficult.
And I don't know that I saw it in here, but on the phone, he did mention that any money we would give them, they would put into their CDC Community Development Committee for Economic Development.
Was that dollar figure passed at their council meeting, or was that his?
No, no, that's, I think, I don't see it in the article. I think that was their consensus amongst them, that they'd like to see something like that.
Do we know the cost of repairs, what it's going to cost to repair it?
He had a local contractor, Mark Cloud, give him an estimate on the roof, $7,440. It's not bad.
To update the board quickly, and that's why I stood up, to give you just a little bit of background, about two weeks ago, when we were receiving a bunch of rain, they had a water leak out there, and we were asked to go out and take a look at it, which we did. As part of that, I had some conversations with Jeremy, who at that time kind of asked me to take a look at what repairs that that building might need if someone, whether it be us or whether it be Anthem, what costs might be associated with that building in the next five years. And I actually just got that completed this week. We took a look at it. My estimation, the next five years repairs there are going to be $30,000. So I just wanted you to know those figures. Again, as far as the, whatever contract Mark might be talking about.
That's completely different than what you're talking about.
Yeah, it might be, and it may very well be different than that, so I just was reporting that.
Well, I think the conversations that I've had, I think, are that we would fix that roof as best we could as it is, and then get this into a CIP one or two or three years down the road. That kind of where we were.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the suggestion could be, might be going forward, but that is a possibility, yeah.
Well, we've gone from them providing a building for the treasurer to now talking about buying the building and repairing the building.
Them providing a building is?
They provided the building because they wanted the traffic and they wanted the treasure, a presence there.
Twenty-five years ago. And they paid for the building, $21,000, August 14, 1995. One of the issues is, can we make repairs to a building we don't own in that amount of money?
Well, and that's where I directed Kenny at that time, the idea of just allowing water to go in and saying, well, that's the status quo. I wanted to make sure that we did at least protected the health and safety of any employees in there, and then beyond that, you know, needed to come back before the board to say what's the long-term going to be. And so, that's why I think we're where we're at today, and I was appreciative that some of you met to discuss at least potentials.
So are we interested in buying the building for a dollar?
I think they want a little more than a buck, but that we can talk about that. If they provide $10,000 of these $30,000 of repairs, we can buy it for $10,000.
That would work.
Well, to buy it for $10,000, do all the repairs, and then give it back, of course, we'll probably never give it back.
We'll never give it back.
That seems a little high to me, but I could see a dollar.
Yeah, I could, too. If we want to take on that responsibility, because we're going to be putting more into the building than it's worth, so.
I think as long as we're providing the county service, then it's probably a good idea to?
Don't get too.
Too what?
Do you want to talk about this over there?
Well, probably.
Well, we know the information as far as some potentials. It's an information item for tonight, and so if we want to bring it back, if someone wants to bring it back.
I have a question for Kenny about the maintenance. That'll be another building added to your list to maintain then, too. Is that a problem?
It's not a problem, as long as we fund the CIP going forward to cover those costs, and I guess one side note is that Anthem is quite a ways out there, and it is quite a drive, so that does take some time.
And it does serve a lot more than Anthem, but Danbury folks talk about that a lot, Crextonville, Cushing.
Yeah, from what I understand, there's a lot of community support to have that building there, that service there.
And that's what, how it originated, was the community wanted that presence, so they did not have to drive to Sioux City.
Well, whether it's a dollar, $10,000, it seems like it's something that's good to continue, and however you all want to bring that back.
I'll write it up for next week.
We can certainly have that discussion next week, because the hour is waning.
It's not my fault the hour is waning.
I look at your accusatory eyes and smile. Okay. Item 20.
You guys want to go back there and talk?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did eight, was 18F?
That was moved to?
Earlier.
Right.
And what, what did we do there?
We authorized CMBA to change the scope of the contract in order to focus from the third-floor recreation area to the second floor by taking the sheriff's administration, putting in the clerk of courts, which is vacant because they're moving here, and study that space to continue to do the first phase as far as the, looking at the schematic design of what it would cost to either get a go or a no-go moving forward.
And do we know what that's going to cost us?
It should be approximately twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Approximately.
Or do you see that exactly?
Larry, by the way.
Pardon me?
I think you voted no on it.
Well, I did vote no. I'm just trying to clarify what the other four supervisors did.
Okay.
Right, so it's to look at that first, that first phase to see, is this even a potential so that we don't throw good money after that?
Right. But where are you coming up with the dollar figure? That's what I'd kind of like to know.
There, twenty thousand three hundred and fifty was...
Yes, it would be the previously approved CMBA contract. The only...
Don't want to work under a contract that says, study the third floor when they said the third floor's not really viable.
Right.
And change the focus, and then they would be doing work.
All right, so we're still only on a twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-dollar contract?
Yes.
My second question on eighteen B.
We punted.
Is that going to go out to bid? Or what are we going to?
We will not go out to a formal bid, but we will receive a second quotation. We have emergency provisions that were passed by the board.
Well, yeah, but the emergency positions, provisions were to secure the building, you know, so the windows wouldn't fall out and the marble wouldn't fall down. Well, this is going to the complete renovation of that courtroom.
Ultimately, it's got to be fixed, right?
Right. But it should be bid. I've visited with the Assistant County Attorney, and I, he agrees with me, I believe.
I agree in regards to a second quote. The threshold, and they update it every year, in regards to the formal bidding, is a hundred and thirty-five thousand this year. So even if you would look at taking the windows out separately from putting them back in and the structural part, and look at them as different projects, you wouldn't reach the hundred and thirty-five thousand threshold. So it's clear that we don't, that fact coupled with the emergency resolution, it's clear that we don't have to go out to a formal bid. But competitive quotes are required when the project is a hundred thousand. And given the, the close proximity to that figure, especially when you figure in the lift that was rented, the recommendation is to go out to, to get a second quote.
But wait a minute, you confuse me. It's a hundred and thirty thousand now?
It's a hundred and thirty-five for a formal competitive bidding process.
Right.
Where you have the plans and specs and everyone submits sealed bids.
Right, and I understand, you know, all that. But you're going over that threshold probably when you start talking about the rental of the equipment, bogan rees price.
Right, but that was dealt with, with the emergency resolution.
Right, but then, if you're saying that's the emergency resolution, what is this?
In my view, the emergency resolution covers the entire project.
Well, then now you're over the threshold again.
Well, the emergency resolution basically makes it so that the threshold doesn't apply, at least when it comes to a formal bid, the formal bidding process.
Well, I'm, you know, we've always been bid things. I mean, we've been very cognizant of what the state law is. But if we've gone over twenty-five thousand, I think we almost bid everything. And this is, you're talking a hundred and some odd thousand.
And I think I'm with you all the way, except if I have a boiler go out in one of those schools and I say, well, we've got to wait to get bids and it's minus ten out, I'm going to freeze those pipe trits. So there's a provision within code that says you have some latitude.
Right, but that, this does not qualify under that provision.
Oh, it absolutely does. I mean, if these windows fall...
They're gone. They're not in there anymore.
The terracotta's about to...
Terracotta's in there.
We've got some other issues I haven't shared with the whole board yet. We've got some terracotta issues.
Well, now, if you haven't shared it with the whole board, how can we make a legitimate decision here? Or an informed decision?
I haven't brought it for a decision today. That's why we pulled it from the table.
But you had to secure the windows.
Right, and that's what the emergency...
And we've also got some marble issues that don't go away.
We just leave them in that condition, correct? I mean, if we do have the plastic...
We've got plenty, we've got plenty of time to bid it out.
We've also got some marble issues that are not going away, just because we took the windows out.
Right.
The building still continues to move, and so we still are under an emergency situation. That hasn't changed.
I mean, I'm taking our legal counsel's advice, both on punting, I'll stop using that, both on tabling this item tonight to get a second, at least a second competitive quote without going through the formal process, because you'd have to build plans and specs and send those out, which could take weeks for an architect to design. And so this allows you that latitude. But I'm not a lawyer. I think he is, you know? So that's why I, I think we're following his advice on both ends, by both not taking action tonight, but also using the provisions of an emergency repair.
And I think that the certificate from the architect or the letter from the architect, when they looked at it and said, yes, it is an emergency repair, the scope of what they said needs to be done would include both actually removing the windows so that they don't fall out, as well as everything that needs to be done to put them back and basically complete the repair. And so that letter and the resolution from the board would cover the whole project from taking the windows out to completion of the repair. So that addresses the formal bidding part of it. But again, my opinion is that the, the second quote is required, which is a separate provision of the code, and that's something that we're, we're getting at this point.
And, and who's getting that quote?
Be the architect, correct?
I believe it's the architect, we're working together with Kenny.
That's his getting the quote? The architect?
No. I will work with the architect, but the main go-to person to get back to what we're doing. Unless we plan on...
Unless we would plan on utilizing the architect to do that, who would, who, who would charge us time to do that, which I don't feel is, is necessary, and...
Well, as long as it's competitive.
Right.
I don't want a quote for quote's sake.
Right. And that would be, that would be our goal. Also, I spoke earlier about the terracotta, and I hadn't talked to the entire board about it yet. Events are happening faster than I can report it sometimes. We just, we just found out that we have some terracotta issues. We actually had Mark Monson up in a high lift the other day to take a look at new discoveries that we found, that you couldn't see from the ground or see from the windows. We've got some terracotta issues that are going to have to be looked at right away. It may be, it may be that I might be coming back to the board and asking for another emergency resolution to address the terracotta.
There was, honest to God, there was a piece of duct tape up there.
There was a piece of duct tape out there, yeah. True story.
Well, Kenny, amidst the dozens and dozens of projects you have, thanks for what you're doing. And we will look forward to your continued reports. Any other thoughts on that? Seeing none, item twenty is chairman's report, quarterly labor management meeting. I had the first one. Preston DeBoer mentioned upcoming one that will be scheduled with Ed and myself and them as well. But three items with CWA that I thought were brought before us and had a very good discussion over about an hour's time. One was Prairie Hills closure. There's concern on the SWAT training room, classroom space, upper floors, even K-9 training. Let them know what we're balancing as far as the amount of money that we feel will be spent over the next ten years, but also that we will look as part of the discussion in the LAC expansion committee, which their role is to provide our recommendation back as to what can be done in order to meet those needs outside of that failing building. Item two is jail issues and climate control. Just talked about as far as morale, inmates, their level of happiness. Sometimes it's predicated on being too cold, too hot, and so on. And we took action tonight on at least the first step, on getting the front ends of building automation control taken care of. And I sent an email, I just included there, to Kenny that that should most likely be priority as, as he goes through all of the building automation systems, because it's a 24/7 operation. And then on clarity of paychecks, we discussed an issue, and without getting too into the details or weeds, there's an issue regarding trying to make the, the contract language as far as the number of hours comport and to the number of hours worked and how that's sort of put off a certain number of hours to the second paycheck, and there's some discussion there. And so looking to work with Ed, Gene, and Doug Phillips on just a way forward to, to look at that issue further. And anything of substance would, you know, come back before the board if it was sizable. Item B is Rural Economic Development Committee meeting minutes. You have them. David Gleiser took great notes. Item C is Ag Expo Center. I included an email here that is some back and forth. I realized I was gone, listened to the meeting and heard Supervisor Smith, your comments, and also received the guidance from Bob Johnston and Artills today. So also talked to Marty Doherty today. They had a, a meeting with Western Iowa Tech yesterday. No formal agreement with them has been signed, but there is continued interest, and it's something that will most likely go before their board. And I have asked as far as if there's going to be some sort of private management, if that, at least on my, my personal concern, is something that could be vetted. And while there, there's some real hesitation as far as using tax increment financing, I think that they would be open to looking at any documentation or provisions that Bob Johnston has, if that would be something that their legal counsel could review as well. They seem to be doubtful, at least initially, that that was a potential, given that it's in a current TIF right now. But that's something that they could look at and reveal.
Yes, if you want to share that information, I thought it was good information that he sent to us and confirmed what he had been telling me verbally. So, you know, I don't know if there's misinformation. He did say he called their bonding attorney, I don't know if he wants me to say this, at the state level, and they have never once consulted that bonded attorney for a TIF opinion. So their, their opinions are in-house. They, or at least they're not coming, you know, from a Holler's law firm. So hopefully they will look at that and decide if they want to cooperate, but I think it'd be a good starting point, and at least from our end, we can all be on the same page that at least it's, we can do it. I just thought due diligence was needed on that aspect for us to investigate what our options were to finance it. If we, if it gets to that point where it looks like the project is going to go, and I hope it does go. And I think this is, I don't know where else the pots of money would be for us, quite honestly. I really don't, so.
And I think as long as they're both at the staff, city council level and their legal counsel agree that that's something they'd both want to do and that they think it's advisable to do.
And they would have to agree, but hopefully they'll realize it doesn't do any harm to their TIF area and their, and their bonding capacity or their payback or absolutely anything, so. I did have a chance to talk to the bar yesterday about it, just to get his sense on where the project was. And take this for what it's worth, I don't know if he's in sync necessarily with the staff members, so I just thought it was interesting to listen to him. So it looks like they've got some communication problems over there, too. So they, I'm not sure he was brought up to speed, or maybe was in agreement with the meetings, or, so it'll be interesting what comes back, because they had some real different ideas on, on all the, all their projects and how he wanted the money divided up and what he wanted to happen. So they just kind of settled that staff, this is what I think. So I don't know what that means.
Thoughts, questions, discussions?
Not for the press, though, to write that out.
Well, if, if Bob Johnston is amenable to me sharing that, or someone sharing that with the city legal counsel, that's, that's fine. And I also just want to make sure that, just as one supervisor, the due diligence is very, very important to me as far as how this thing is going to be managed.
Exactly.
And I just don't want to see something that happened, I don't use specific examples, but where economic development didn't come to fruition and then a taxing body was on the hook for it. So I, I want to make sure that that is, is well-vetted, and we'll see what developments come.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Item D, Board Administration Mission Statements. I'd sat down with Karen, Heather, and Dennis, and just wanted to share what they put together. And I thought it looked great, as well as Dennis's department logic model. So very appreciative of all of your work there. And then item E is May twenty-fourth County Government Day. And I think that Karen's pulling up a little video data Gleiser put together, and it sounds like it's going to be a great day. Supervisors Claussen and Smith, would you be willing to serve food on that day if Supervisor Ungoes in a dunk tank?
Is he going in a dunk tank?
Yes.
I thought that that's an even trade.
What is the date?
It's Tuesday, May twenty-fourth. And David's just done a great job on advertising this thing. It sounds like there's some school kids that are going to come up and the public and...
Where are we serving food at?
Dennis?
Down here, down here.
My only thing is, I don't, I don't mind serving food, but I don't want to be in the basement the whole time during the...
Sure, sure.
I mean, I, I don't mind taking a shift. I want to be out and about with everybody else. I don't want to be down here the whole time, so...
I will, I will volunteer. I guess I've been voluntold, I'm in the dunk tank. They wanted to taze me, Supervisor Claussen, if you can believe that, but...
I would volunteer to taze you.
In the dunk tank.
So, yeah, I think we can take shifts and...
If we could take shifts, I just don't, the whole time, I don't want you to stick me in the basement, and I'd like to be out with the people, too, so.
We'll take shifts and...
You want to go first or second in the dunk tank?
I'll go first. However long, how long are the shifts?
In the dunk tank?
No, I'm not doing the dunk tank. For that, I'm not.
I haven't found out about that. We'll, we'll put something forward where it'll kind of be even, and I think it's going to be a great day. And you're going to get confirmation from Charlie Stone on Thursday, having different department heads and elected officials on, and if he can broadcast from the courthouse, that'd be great.
He won't want to talk to me, so that's why I can't be stuck the whole time down here. I already know that. He's going to want to talk.
Thursday, he'll let you know?
Right. That's what he told me.
He doesn't know by, by now?
He doesn't know by now. He wants to get the logistics all in hand first. But David Gleiser will be on.
You're going in a dunk tank.
So he'll have his own solo show. Karen, do you want to go ahead and show what David put together? I thought it was very, very nicely done.
I think I saw it on TV.
We won't tell you his voice it is.
Woodbury County proudly serves the public each and every day, urban, suburban, and rural. Woodbury County boards through cities, states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're here to work or shipping goods across the globe, county government matters. Woodbury County owns and maintains over thirteen hundred miles of roads and more than three hundred bridges. We also financially support the Sioux River Airport and Sioux River Transit System. We support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems, and our funding of the county attorney's office and sheriff's department. And we own and operate the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center, Jail, and Detention Center. We ensure the health and safety of our employees by funding the Sioux River Health Department, Woodbury County Emergency Services, Emergency Management, and nine-point-one Communication Center. We provide coordinated case management for veterans through the Woodbury County Department of Veteran Affairs. We financially support Sioux River Medical and Disability Services. We invest in the lives and residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live in Portland. We support efficient growth and performance processes through our Department of Planning and Zoning. We facilitate economic and community development with our Department of Rural Economic Development. We provide numerous outdoor recreational facilities and programs through the Woodbury County Conservation Department. Woodbury County provides essential services to the public, registration, birth certificates, marriage licenses, and vital records. New registered vehicles, essential titles and licenses of medical practices, assess residential, professional, industrial, and agricultural property locations. We administer all regulatory special actions from local to residential throughout the entire county. We strive to manage our facilities and grounds effectively and efficiently. We work to protect the integrity of our data and information systems, and we balance numerous administrative duties and responsibilities to ensure the ease of our elected officials, staff, and departments are manned. Woodbury County employs over four hundred people and is responsible for governing one hundred thousand county residents. We manage a living, growing out of our budget, and we work tirelessly to invest into the lives of our residents and communities each and every year. That's why county government matters.
He's not here right now, but that was an outstanding job, so really appreciated all, and do appreciate all David's work.
Ran off the journal.
Sure, I don't see why not. I think it's a pretty good way in three minutes or four minutes' time to do good things, so... And he was glad during the department head meeting that he'd received no texts or angry messages, so. Item twenty-one...
Because he had his phone hooked up to the video system.
Right, right. Item twenty-one is reports on committee meetings.
I was pleased to give a welcome at the Many Faces of Mental Illness Conference, sponsored by Sioux Rivers, at the convention center last week.
I'm just going to do one. I got a pile, but just one. General assistance to date, seven burials, health assistance, had three applications, they approved two. Provisions such as food, clothing, et cetera, one household received assistance. Rent mortgage, sixty-one applications, thirty-two were approved. Transportation, twenty-two received assistance. Electric heat, et cetera, utilities, five household applied and five received assistance. Water and utilities, nineteen households applied and sixteen received assistance. We're pretty good at burying people. That seems to be very consistent.
I'm sure during those times, it's very, very difficult for people.
There's one more here that's just earthshaking. LIHEAP is a grant program that funds heating. Folks that need propane, or Mid-American, or whatever, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight applications, and they approved eight-hundred-and-seven. It's a lot of money. That's a lot of people without heat.
All right, any others? We are to number twenty-two, citizen concerns. Hearing, no one left. And number twenty-three, board concerns. I'll just say that Supervisor Clausen challenged me to stay under three hours, and he'd get me a Jim's burger, and I made it. So with that...
I started at four o'clock. What time is it?
Mentally at four oh five. With that, let's adjourn.